Okay.
Great. So I am calling order this special meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board on Monday, June 29, 2020 via remote using Microsoft Teams. And the first order of business is Tim Corwin, if you would go over once again the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Tim Corwin. I'm with the planning department. I believe Rebecca Owens should be or will be joining us soon also from the planning department. And Brian Vincent, the city engineer is with us as well. Due to coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 issued on March 23, 2020, in accordance with the executive order 2020-04, the Lebanon Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order number 12, sorry, I'm just letting someone in accordance with emergency order number 12, the city of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the planning board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the planning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has the has access to contemporaneously listen and to participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the June 29, 2020 Planning Board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and to spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we ask all board members and staff to please identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone by clicking the microphone icon that appears on the Teams platform if you hover your cursor on the middle lower half of your screen. For people calling in by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. If anyone has difficulty with access during the if anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, please email us at planning@lebanonnh.gov, planning@lebanonnh.gov, or use the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. If we can provide technical assistance, we will try to do so. If we are unable to do so, it is still worthwhile to be aware of problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address those for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to continue holding the meeting, it will be adjourned and the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes that are taken during the meeting tonight shall be done by roll call vote. Please note that there may be a delay between the time that something is said and when you hear it home. Please be patient as we try and manage that delay. We ask that you not use the chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. And again, if you are, there's maybe we may not be able to do anything about that tonight. Finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the city's website, lebanonnh.gov/AgendaCenter. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tim. I will now proceed with a roll call of the board members as we've done in the past. Please say whether you're present and whether you're alone. So I am obviously present and I am alone. Gregorio, are you there for this meeting? He's been on the road. I do not hear him. Jim Winnie. Joan Monroe.
Monroe is here and alone.
Thank you, Laurel.
Laurel is here and alone.
Kathy.
Kathy is here and alone.
Matt.
Matt is here and alone.
A lot of background noise, Matt. I'll just find that on the wire.
That's Tom.
That's Tom.
Tom is here and alone, and it's probably Wheezy.
All right, it's probably you. And Karen Leo Hill, in case Jim can't make it, are you here?
I am here. Karen Leo Hill, I am here.
You know, if Jim is planning on attending, Karen.
My understanding is that Jim is planning to attend. I was just planning to be here as an observer, but I have been following the discussion and I am prepared to participate in whatever capacity is required.
Well, I'm marking you down as you know, part of this board this evening unless we hear from Jim. I don't know if Jim has not realized that we're starting at six rather than 6:30. So Karen, are you alone?
I am alone.
All right.
And if I may, Chair Garland, I just would like to clarify for the record. I do work for Carolyn Cole, who is in Abutter to this property at 18 Bank Street. She has weighed in publicly. I have weighed in publicly. I my I do not have any pecuniary interest in the outcome of this vote, but I just wanted to disclose that I work for in Abutter.
All right. Tim, any opinion on that?
No, I guess I would just say, and I don't think it's the case, but Counselor Hill can 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 refresh my memory. I just want to be sure that there were no comments made, that this Counselor Hill did not make any comments in this matter that would indicate a a decision one way or the other, or a bias, if you will, one way or the other. I don't I don't recall anything. For example, I don't I don't recall Counselor Hill specifically saying I am in support of this project or I am opposed to this project or anything along those lines. I just want to be sure that there isn't anything that we're forgetting. Just out of an abundance of caution, we just want to make sure there weren't any statements made that could be determined to be a prejudgment of the application.
I believe we have a letter from someone in the community referencing a statement that was made.
Statement by whom, Kathy?
One of the letters in our packet from someone in the community.
No, but a statement made by?
Karen.
By Karen. Do you have that handy by any chance?
Sure, I do. We all should.
It was in our packet for tonight. There's there's one mention in the very first letter that was sent by Linda Armstrong.
Yes, Joan.
Did you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. Well, Ms. Armstrong writes, "To the planning board, we are writing to express our strenuous objection to the comments made by Councilwoman Karen Leo Hill during last night's meeting. We are offended by her patronizing suggestion that the main reason neighbors and other citizens object to the plan is because they are, quote, 'resistant to change,' unquote. Our main position seems to be that such input is irrelevant and that board members should only concern themselves with the information in their packets. In fact, we are aware that several members of the public have done extensive research backing up their opinions with impartial data. If public input is to be disregarded, why bother to have a public hearing at all? We are trusting that the members of the planning board can consider all the input they receive and make fair, balanced decisions. Whatever you decide, we will have to live with."
This is Karen Leo Hill, if I may.
Yes, Karen.
I believe that I've been, I have certainly tried to be extremely careful to keep my comments relative to the process and not to weighing in on the merits of this particular project. At the last meeting, I I did talk about how I understand the frustration that people feel when there are proposals for projects in their neighborhoods, but I exhorted the board to look to the regulations and and to the law. I don't believe that I have prejudged this application. In fact, my mind is still not made up if I were in the position to have to vote on this. And my comments in all public meetings so far have been to to encourage the board to follow the regulations and the law. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Tim, you had a chance to?
Thank you. I didn't hear anything. The the comments from the Abutter regarding or characterizing Counselor Hill's requirements or comments, previous comments certainly don't strike me as prejudging the the merits of the application. But that's and but it's I think the the decision is up to is typically up to the the member themselves to to determine whether or not they they are indeed biased or not against the application. I think you've heard Counselor Hill's statement on that.
Yes, I agree with that.
There Counselor, I mean, Chair Garland?
Yes.
There are there are two other mentions. There is a mention in Doreen Schweitzer's letter. Although she's, I can read it all if you would like me to. And and well, want me to read it?
Yes, it is along the same lines. No, I think that now that you've mentioned it, you better read it.
It says, it says, "Lastly, I want to take issue with Karen Leo Hill's remarks about democracy which she made towards the end of the meeting. Yes, it is wonderful that Karen has volunteered her time for our city for many, many years. And yes, I applaud and deeply appreciate the work she has done, especially though not only in regard to social justice, fairness, and inclusion. Yes, I agree that it would be great if some of us who are speaking up and opposing Ms. Kish's proposal would volunteer to help run the city. All these yeses relate directly to democracy, but they are not all that democracy is." Then she continues, "Democracy asks us to vote to elect officials who will willingly carry out their mandate to listen to the concerns of the citizens who elect them and to take those concerns to heart in the decisions they make. Ms. Leo Hill's assertion that the planning board is wasting precious time by listening to the concerns of Lebanon citizens, those of us who are going to be directly and adversely affected by Ms. Kish's proposed plan, is short sighted. Democracy takes time. It takes careful thought and deliberation if it is to work. It takes a lot of listening. It also takes a sincere effort to engage with one another with respect, honesty, and an open mind. The planning board has been doing democracy beautifully, and so have we, the citizens." And then also in our minutes from tonight's meeting, if I may, Mr. Hall made an observation, I'm reading directly from our minutes for the from the June 16 meeting.
Right.
Mr. Hall observed that the new district regulations are inviting this type of project downtown, and it meets regulations. And then later in the meeting, reading from the minutes, it says, "Counselor Karen Leo Hill stated her agreement with Mr. Hall. She stated that she understood the concerns of the Abutters as any significant change could be disturbing. She inquired if among the waivers being requested, did the height and size of the proposed development require any special variance or exception from the planning board regulations?" To finish that, Chair Garland stated that the height of 50, next page, feet is permissible, but there are four waivers that need to be approved for it to move ahead. Counselor Hill asserted that the planning board is asked to make decisions looking at regulations as they are and apply them judiciously. It sounds like there may be interest in reviewing some of the standards in the neighborhoods, but the board must apply the current regulations."
Thank you for that, Joan.
This is Karen Leo, Karen Leo Hill, if I may.
Yes, Karen.
Thank you, and I I appreciate the, well, I appreciate the complimentary comments that Ms. Schweitzer made. And I also understand her her concerns with the with the comments I made about democracy. I think the the record, the if if anyone wanted to go back to the tape to listen, I think you will see that there has never been, in fact, there's never been a single point in 15 years that I have ever suggested that we not allow people to speak when they wish to speak. I have been an ardent advocate for allowing and encouraging members of the public to participate and to be heard. In fact, that was the nature of my concerns and of my testimony at the very first meeting that I participated in regarding this project was exactly how and when members of the public would be invited and encouraged to participate. At the last meeting, I understood based on the testimony that I was hearing from, particularly from neighbors, that there is some dissatisfaction potentially with the current laws, with the current planning board regulations, and that democracy is the process by which we change those laws. The planning board is required to apply the current laws and not to change those laws during the process. And so I agree that democracy in Lebanon is working very well, and I agree that it is important for every citizen to be heard. And I believe that I have supported that consistently, not just over 15 years, but in fact, over the last couple of meetings regarding this project. That being said, I understand that that people may have objections to my participation in this conversation, and it quite honestly was not my intent to be sitting as a voting member of this. I had understood that Counselor Winnie would be present. So if the board, if if there, I don't know if it is a practice for the board to take a vote, but I am willing to participate. I believe that I have not prejudged this application. I believe the record reflects that I have made my comments strictly to the process and to encouraging the board to apply the existing regulations and law to this project. But that being said, if the board felt that there was a concern, I am absolutely willing to recuse myself from this matter. Thank you.
I don't think that's for the board to discuss. That's up to you to decide, but I
Mr. Chair, this is Tim, the the any board member can request an advisory vote from the board, but it would be advisory only, and so it's still up to the the board member. But that is something that I'm not suggesting that the board should or shouldn't do that. I'm just letting you know that 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 can be requested by anyone, well, by the member who's who's subject.
Karen, what could I ask you, if if you could, just to phone Jim Winnie? I'm afraid he's going to show up at 6:30 and all this conversation becomes mute because he then becomes the representative.
Mr. Chair, there there does appear to be an issue with folks trying to call in. Apparently, the the conference ID that that people are using is not letting them into this meeting. Can I can I just ask, is there anyone who's on the meeting right now, whether it's a member of the public or anyone else that's that's participating via telephone? If you're participating via telephone, can you can you let us know?
Can you unmute? So that's star six.
It would be star six to unmute your phone. So it it appears that I don't know if if Counselor Winnie has participated via telephone in the past, but he 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 may be having trouble accessing the meeting.
Is that is that a blanket for anyone that's trying to access?
I believe so. It was brought it was brought to our attention in the in the the chat section. We just sent out the the correct conference ID number. And so I assume that that will be distributed to the members of the public who wish to join the join the 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 meeting by telephone. If anyone, if anyone has, if if anyone has Counselor Winnie's telephone number, perhaps we can, somebody could call him. The
Get on, log on to the
Yes, this is Karen Leo Hill. I do have his phone number. I will call him right now.
Tim, this is Rebecca. I believe that if anyone accidentally hit the star button when it says if you are the meeting organizer, press star when they're trying to call in, that could have been part of the trouble that that part of the menu for calling in needs to be skipped.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to move on and we'll see if Jim Winnie joins us. So our first order of business is the Bank Street application. I'll just note that in addition to obviously the applicant making presentations, questions from the board members, we've had well over an hour and a half of public interaction, had numerous submissions from the public. And this for this meeting is time that we move to review and decide on the four waiver requests. So the agenda for that will be the following. I'm going to ask Tim Corwin to review the individual requests and the the rules that are involved. I believe that Dan Nash, on behalf of the applicant, will wish to comment on the four, the reasons the applicant is requesting the four waivers. We'll then have a discussion among board members, and then we'll proceed to have a vote on each of the waivers individually. So with that, I will ask Tim Corwin to give us a review of the four waivers.
And and quickly, before Tim jumps in, we have an update that Counselor Winnie will be joining. It was just a confusion about the meeting start time.
No. All right, thank you. Is that Karen?
That was Rebecca, I think.
Oh, that was Rebecca.
That was Rebecca, but Karen did speak with, this is Karen, and I did speak with Counselor Winnie. He thought that the meeting had started at 6:30, so he's joining as soon as he can.
All right, thank you for that. I hope that he announces himself when he does. Or I will double check anyway. So thank you for your intervention, Karen, but I'm afraid you're going to have to step aside. Appreciate it. So Tim, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin. Can everyone see the my screen?
Yes.
This is an exhibit that was provided by the applicant at a at a prior meeting or two, and I'm just going to use it to describe the first waiver request, which we have been over, I think, a couple of times. But just to refresh everyone's memory, the the site plan review regulations require a 15-foot landscaping perimeter. And so around around each development site, and so that perimeter extends around the perimeter of the site. So you need to provide a 15-foot landscape strip, and there are certain requirements, certain landscaping requirements that must be met within that 15-foot landscape buffer. The applicant is not providing the 15-foot width in the areas roughly roughly depicted by the orange hatch areas on on either side of the site here. And so is requesting a waiver from the requirement, the landscaping perimeter, perimeter landscaping requirements of Section 6.2B1. It's a partial waiver because they are meeting it around the the rear and side of the proposed eight Bank Street building. It's important to note that Section 62B1 provides an exception to the landscaping perimeter requirement, and the exception provides that minimum landscape area along the front side and rear property line shall be shall be provided except within the central business district where proposed development of the site does not allow. And as as we all know, this this application is subject to the central business district zoning regulations. And I did review some past development applications where in in the central business district where Section 6.2B1 was at issue. And in those applications, the applicant did request a waiver, but it appears the board, the planning board granted those waivers in part because of this exception that that's found within within the language. So I think it would be appropriate for the board to 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 wait to make a decision on the waiver request one way or the other, but recognizing that that there is that exception that says it shall not apply where proposed development on the site does not allow. That's the language of 62B1. That is the first waiver. The second waiver is from Section 6.2. D of the Site Plan Review Regulations, which requires a 10-foot landscaping perimeter buffer around buildings. So so 62B1, the first waiver request is a 15-foot landscaping strip around the perimeter of the site. And then Section 62D requires a a landscaping buffer or landscaping strip around the buildings themselves of 10 feet in width. And where the the 10-foot building strip, if you will, can overlay the 15-foot perimeter landscaping strip. So for example, back here at the rear of the proposed eight Bank Street building, because a 15-foot perimeter landscaping buffer is provided, then then the requirements of Section 6.2D requiring a 10-foot strip around the building is also satisfied. They can, they are not in addition to one another. They can overlap one another. But in some areas, as indicated by the applicant, and let me increase the size, the there is less than 10 feet in between the buildings and 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 the next building over or the property line. And so they do require a a waiver from Section 6.2D. However, I do think there are are areas on the site, in addition to what the applicant has identified as not meeting that Section 6.2D 10-foot building landscaping requirement. I've shown three of them in bold circles. One is at the east end of the proposed eight Bank Street building in between the two two surface parking spots in the front of the building in this area. And then on either side of the proposed 14 Bank Street building, there is not a 10-foot landscaping strip in between the sides of that building and the drive aisles on either side. And so I think waivers needed from to to allow for those areas as well. And then finally, there are two areas, two areas that are circled in dotted blue lines. These, I I think, also do not meet the requirements of Section 6.2D, but it's less clear in this area because there are some exceptions. There's an exception that that's contained within 62D, and it's not clear because in in it's not clear whether a a sidewalk in this instance falls within underneath, falls within that exception. So the difference between the landscaping around the building requirement provided for the existing eight Bank Street building, the existing eight Bank Street building and and the the landscaping strips on either side of the proposed 14 Bank Street building is that in in this case, in 14 Bank Street, it's clear, it's clear to my mind that there is no exception for drive aisles. So if you, in other words, you can't place a drive aisle within that 10-foot landscaping strip. It's not as clear to me that that these sidewalks don't fall under that exception of Section 62D. And so we can, we can discuss that in more detail if you like, or encourage the board to do so. The the third waiver requirement is from Section 65B5, which requires minimum, that minimum access requirement shall include a 50-foot turning radius and 22-foot fire lanes at the rear of the buildings. Although the although, as you know, the the fire department has not voiced any concern about about the proposed development, the application does not meet the requirements of Section 65B5 as they are currently written. Finally, Section 7, 672B of the Site Plan Review Regulations requires that the proposed site lighting, that the the lighting levels do not exceed 0.5-foot candles at the front of the lot. In this case, the applicant is proposing lighting that would exceed 2.5-foot candles again, at the at the front of the lot where it's co-terminous with Bank Street. In terms of the 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 board's standards for granting a waiver, they are set forth in Section 7.1 of the Site Plan Review Regulations, and the the language that we have in our regulations mirrors the statutory language. And that is that the board may grant a waiver from any any requirement within the Site Plan Review Regulations if they find one of if they find one of two things. Either either A, that strict conformity with the regulation they are seeking a waiver from, whether strict conformity with that regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. So that's criteria A. If you find that that's the case, then you would you would be permitted to grant a waiver. And then the second basis is "Specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of the land in such site plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations." So if you find that any particular waiver request meets that criteria, then then you would be free to grant a waiver. But it but you need to find one or the other, either 7.1A or B. And if you do, then again, you'd be permitted to grant the waiver.
All right, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Tim and Bruce, this is Rebecca. I'm sorry to interrupt. Tim and Bruce, this is Rebecca. I'm sorry to interrupt. We did have continued chat about technical difficulties, difficulties for people trying to call in. Apparently, the number for the code on the webpage had a number switched. One of the guests has kindly emailed some people, but probably not captured all of those trying to use that number. So Counselor Beal did ask if there was any consideration about continuing.
I'm going to think about that, but not, we're not going to continue right away. We need to get through these waivers, and we're not having comment from the public until we're done with the waiver. So unfortunately for some, they will not be able to listen to this. I appreciate that that is stressing. But I think that it behooves us to at least address these four waivers this evening, and then we'll see where we stand. Winnie, have you been able to join us?
Counselor Winnie is here. I joined during Tim's presentation. I just want to interrupt him.
And you're alone?
I am alone.
All right. Thank you.
Apologies for the time mistake.
Right. And I heard someone asking my attention.
That was me, Monroe.
Yes, Joan.
I would strongly object whenever there's a situation that when the public cannot get into the meeting. I really feel quite strongly that, that, that begins to be a, for lack of a better way of describing it, not, not strictly adhering to the public right-to-know laws. I don't feel that we should have any business that we conduct if the, if all of the public that wants to get in is not in.
Well, it's not all of the public. My understanding is that portion of the public that is trying to get in by telephone, and some of them may be succeeding because they've been advised of the corrected number. Is that right, Tim?
That's what I'm understanding.
Mr. Chair, this is Laurel.
Yes, Laurel.
I would echo Joan's sentiment here. I, I feel that, however inadvertent, the switching of the numbers may have been on the part of the person who posted them, the fact that the information is incorrect really means that there was insufficient notice of the meeting. Yeah, I feel very strongly about that, that if, if some people who had intended to be here and to listen and perhaps to comment are prevented from doing so because of information that was sent out by the planning office, then that's, that's a violation of their rights.
That's a very good point. Tim, your thoughts?
Yes, those are, those are, of course, excellent points. I'm, I'm wondering if, if we can at, at least make some use out of this meeting, though, to provide direction to the applicant. I, I'm wondering if, if not a formal vote on the waivers, even though there's no public participation at, at this point, if, if the board can provide some guidance to, to the applicant in, in terms of whether any of the waiver requests may, at this point, fail to have a majority support from the, the voting board members.
Chair Garland?
I'm not sure how we do that, although I'll entertain the idea of having a brief discussion among board members as to any thoughts they have as to whether they're in favor or against the motions. And then we stop the meeting. Continue it. Well, we've got some other business, but basically continue this application to a future date. I heard someone's voice. Joan, was I?
Yes, that was me. And, and I will state it again that the, the right-to-know laws in the state of New Hampshire are quite clear. And they have been on the books for quite a while. And they state that the public meeting should be that all of the business that we conduct, if it's in, during the time of our official meeting, which is what we are right now, we are in, within our official meeting, that all of the business that we conduct, whether we vote on things or not, all of the business, which means our discussion, should not be done behind closed doors. And for the people who are trying to get into the meeting but have not been able to get in, that, that it is a closed door to them. I don't know whether we want to take a, like a 15-minute break to see if we can get the people who have not been able to get in. I'm, I'm not quite sure how the planning office would do that. But I'm hearing that they have had some contact with people. I don't know how many people. I don't know if all the people that wanted to get in. It's, it's a little bit awkward when we're online compared to when there are people at the door.
Mr. Chair.
This is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
It, it appears that when, something Rebecca said recently that she knows what the phone number should be and that it was incorrectly published. And that there might, are, are there people going into a chat room saying they can't get in? Could those people somehow be given the correct number? And could somebody send out a message like that came out before that had the correct?
Yeah. Kathy, this is Rebecca. One of the guests said that she was able to email some people, but that doesn't necessarily mean she knows everyone who is able to, unable to get online.
That's not what I said. What I said is, can we publish by email like we did the wrong number, the right number?
I understand, Kathy, but I do not have anyone's email addresses for those who aren't able to join besides two people who emailed the planning department. And I did respond directly to those. I do not have the ability to update the website myself.
Right.
Mr. Chair, this is Matt.
Yes, Matt.
So I, I I think there's two things. Well, I, I, I think I reluctantly agree with Laurel and Joan. I think, I did just check the, the, the city website. It is incorrect. I will say that I think at every single one of these meetings we've had since March, there have been people who've tried to get on who couldn't. So I think that that's not unique. But I do wonder if, if the, if, if the information that is published online is incorrect, whether it'd be appropriate to continue.
No, I'm tending to agree, having heard various people.
This is Tom, and I agree, I agree entirely with what Matt and Laurel and and Joan have said. The fact that it was published incorrectly could give credence to the idea that it was done intentionally, which we know it wasn't. But I think because of that, this is, this is a technical difficulty that is, you know, one that we've just been a half close meeting on.
All right, Tim, I'm going to come back to you to look for a date we can continue this meeting. I guess we can't review the minutes or discuss other business.
No, we cannot.
This, this is Clifton Beal here. Cliff, this is Cliff. This is not a public, this is not open to the public. Sorry. Okay, well.
Chair.
If, if you're gonna adjourn, that's fine. I just wanted to point out that Governor's Executive.
Chair, this is Monroe.
Yes, Joan.
Okay, we, we really can take input in a situation where the person who is trying to give us input may indeed have knowledge. And Mr. Beal has been in the state legislature. He continues to interact with them, and his work on the Energy Committee. He's on the council. He's been on it before in the past. I think that it would be appropriate if he has some, has a suggestion to us that can help enlighten our, our decision of which way we should go. I, I would ask that he be allowed to speak.
All right, Cliff.
And there's similarly a request to speak from Counselor Leat Hill.
So Cliff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to point out that under the right-to-know law, the city website is one place to post a meeting notice. Under Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 that authorizes this kind of meeting, one of the requirements is that the public body adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. And, and the problem is that the city website can't be updated to show the correct phone number. So if somebody's only trying to get in by phone number and isn't in the email chain, they wouldn't know how to remedy the situation. So I, I, I'm just saying in support of the decision to adjourn the meeting. Unfortunately, I, I, I think it's, you know, the appropriate thing to do.
Yeah, I think we've already reached that conclusion. Thank you, Cliff. Karen, did you have anything to add to that?
Thank you. I just wanted to concur. I, I think that Laurel Stavis and others have made the point well that there's an issue of notice. And I, given, given that, I think it's prudent to adjourn. Thank you.
All right. So, Tim, I will now come back to you. Maybe you've had a little chance to look at a calendar. To what date can we continue this meeting?
Did Tim say? No, he's there.
I'm sorry. I, I think you could continue it to the July 13th regular meeting. The, it's, it, the, the, the agenda is relatively full.
On the July 13th?
Yes, but we could certainly allot, you know, at least, you know, at least 45 minutes or so to this, to this application.
Well, we would do so with the objective of dealing with, only with the waivers, if we've only had 45 minutes.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
All right. So.
Would we not continue the public comment portion of this meeting?
Not, not until we've done with the minutes, or with the waivers. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, I'm not saying that. I'm saying we should take special care to note that when we do continue this meeting, it will be for the purpose of the same or a similar agenda that it is this evening, which includes public comment.
No, no. It will be for the purpose of deciding the waivers. If we can get through the waivers in under 45 minutes, then I'd be happy to open up for public comment. But we, we need to address the waivers. We've already had well over an hour and a half of public comment. And we've had numerous letters submitted. We need to get on with the waivers and then, from there, determine our next steps. So July 13th, for the purpose of reviewing and then voting on the four waivers. And I have a motion to that effect.
Chair, can, this is Kathy. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Because we, again, have dozens of people online today who are not part of the board. If they have not sent letters to the board, but they wish to comment and have not had a chance tonight, they would still be able to write a letter to the planning board prior to the next meeting, right?
They could do that until this application is decided at any point in time. Just, and if they have something specific in regard to the waivers, absolutely. But we just need to get on with the waivers before we get on to discussions on the full application. Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Tim.
Uh, thanks, Matt. This is Tim. Just, we accept any correspondence from the public regarding this or any other application. But we, if, if this, if this hearing will be continued until the July 13th meeting, we do need to have all correspondence for that meeting submitted by, I would say, I would say by the end of the day on Wednesday, this Wednesday, July 1st, in order to get it into the board's agenda packet for the July 13th meeting. Also, I don't, I don't know that the, there's any reason for the board or to, to take a vote to continue this application because we are going to have to renotice it. And anyway, we're gonna have to send out new, about, uh, new notices to the butters and, and, and notify, put, put the notification in the newspaper as well. And again, if the board is meeting outside the, outside the confines of 91A, then, then there's, you can't take it in action anyway.
All right. Thank you for that. So anything else from board members before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Laurel.
Yes, Laurel.
I would just like to apologize to members of the public who took the time to dial in or or hoping to be able to hear what we had to say. And, and I hope that they will come back on the 13th.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim. I, I, staffs certainly apologize as well, not just to the members of the public, but, but to the applicant who is now delayed several weeks.
Now, this is a very unfortunate situation. Matt, did I hear your voice?
You do now. Matt Hall here, motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That's Kathy.
No, that's Laurel.
Laurel, thank you. Any discussion? So I will do a roll call. Tom?
Tom moves to oh, Tom, says yes to adjourn.
Matt?
Aye.
Kathy?
Kathy votes yes.
Laurel?
Laurel votes yes.
Joan?
Joan votes yes.
Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
And aye, so that is unanimous. So our apologies to everyone, applicant, public. This is very unfortunate happened. I was hoping that we'd be able to move this ahead. And we will try again July 13th. Thank you and good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night.